Good evening, welcome to the workshop session of the Mayor and City Council of the City of College Park. We have a full quorum this evening and we're gonna get started at six oh one P M. Councilmember Arnold?
Yes, um, Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd like to make an adjustment. I'd like for us to amend the agenda for this evening for the workshop.
For the workshop session?
Yes.
Workshop session?
That part. And what I would, what I am requesting is that because we've been getting so much feedback and we have such a hot topic of concern or a community concern about what's been going on with Chelsea Gardens, we have the, um, the organization that's here to present on that. I would like to move it up to the first item. And also with Style Mob University, um, I believe that, um, Ms. Nicole, Tiffany Nicole has been here three times to present. And so, um, I know that one time, the last time, we made a mistake and did not put them on the workshop agenda, but I would like to move them up out of respect of their time.
All right, so is that a motion, Councilmember Arnold, to move Sage Hands into the number one position for presentation and, um, Style Mob into the number two presentation?
Yes, it is.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Karn, any discussion?
This isn't adding anything, this is just.
Just moving the work.
Just reorganize.
For convenience.
That's right.
Yeah. All right.
Correct. All those in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous, we'll go ahead and start with the Sage Hands presentation.
Where is it on the thing?
Uh, it was the. It is number seven.
Good evening.
Good evening, Council, uh, Mayor, Council and Administration. My name's Robert Gilchrist, I'm with Community Growth Partners and I'm serving as the liaison between the city and the nonprofits that have been chosen to address the issues going on at Chelsea Gardens.
Sorry, if you would just make sure to keep your, your, your volume up, thank you.
How about that? So, I, um, am here on behalf of, of the nonprofits that are on the ground working, Sage Hands and Faith Walkers Community Church. When we were informed, uh, April sixteenth of the issues going on at Chelsea Garden, we put a team together, uh, to assess the needs of the residents. We have some notes and I have those individuals up to be able to speak to you, um, about the issues that are going on at Chelsea Gardens. I know that they have reached out to seventy-two, um, residents and have moved up to twenty-nine residents at a cost of thirty-three thousand plus dollars. That's been self-financed by Sage Hands, uh, so we're here to report to you, uh, the assessments and the findings. And I'd like to invite, uh, a member of, or the president of Sage Hands International, Faith Walkers, uh, Community Church, um, as well as someone representing the owner, uh, to come up and give you guys updates. So, at this time, I'll bring up, uh, Mr. Flinton Watson, who is over the relocation efforts at Chelsea Gardens.
Thank you, sir.
Greetings, 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 everyone.
Greetings.
Like you said, um, Q. Watson, I prefer that name, it, uh, gets me around in areas I need to go into. So, uh, what we wanna do is wanna go ahead and say I am the founder of Sage Hands International and we bring wisdom, practical solutions and positive impact using our hands and our communities. So let's cool, get right to it. Since thirty, we thirty-two day, thirty-two days in since, uh, we discovered the need, we spent ten days planning, uh, to address the issues there.
Sir, could you just make sure to keep your voice up, thank you.
All right.
Is, is the microphone on?
A little closer, I'll probably have to put it there, is that cool? All right. Greetings, greetings, my chief. Um, yeah, and so, uh, we've been twenty-two days working the plan that we put together over the ten days since we found out, eleven days, let's say tennis shoes on the ground. All right, so that was, uh, we was able to move thirteen of those residents during this process over the last eleven days, twenty-two days. That's, uh, two disabled, three veterans, three seniors and five tenants. Now, my list has twenty-seven tenants in progress. What that means is that we're figuring out, trying to help them see is what they're in the process of getting their units or was trying to evaluate what they need in order to be ready to move out, which that's my main priority there, is when they're ready to move out, we'll be able to move them. So on my list, I have twenty-seven tenants in the process, which means we have them on schedule and they should be, uh, once we figure out what their, uh, terminal place is, then we can go ahead and schedule them to move. Since this time, we've had, uh, over three hundred and thirty miles driven, over seven hundred man-hours, fourteen trucks. April sixteenth, as mentioned earlier, where we were made aware of the need, April twenty-sixth, we moved our first person, first residence, seven dash four five seven, single mother, expectant. May eighteenth was our last move. Thus far, it was four one dash five zero six, a disabled person. Uh, so we finished that move yesterday at one o'clock, one thirty-seven approximately. Okay, so that ends my report, uh, we're gonna bring up Pastor Wade Faith Walkers regarding the other ways in which we were able to assist those ones. What I wanna do is encourage you to take a look at what we do and, uh, you might discover that you'll Sage Hands too. So, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
A little shorter.
You can, you can actually bring it down onto the podium.
Oh.
No, I'm saying, you can actually physically pick up the microphone and bring it closer to you.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, help me, I appreciate that. Uh, certainly would like to honor the Mayor and councilpersons and to the administration, but also to the Sage Hands members who are here and also to the Faith Walker members who are here and also to the community. I greet you, uh, in the name of my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. I'm Pastor Brian Webb of the Faith Walkers Community Church here in Atlanta, Georgia. We are not a big church in the sense of members and bodies, but we like to say we are a mini-church with a mega ministry. Why am I here today? I'm here today because we stand not only as neighbors, but as a community committed to action, compassion and care. When the Chelsea Gardens apartment were officially condemned, dozens of our neighbors, many of them seniors, veterans, people with disabilities and working families, suddenly faced the fear and uncertainty of being forced from their homes. In response, Sage Hands International partnered with Faith Walkers Community Church to launch an emergency outreach effort that began as early as when Mr. Watson gave his report. From the start of our mission, it was personal. We went door to door, I myself went door to door, made phone calls and ensured that every resident that we made contact still living in the complex was seen, heard and supported. Each day, our team showed up not just to do a job, but to serve with heart. We helped Stephanie Da- Davenport and her daughter move out of a unit with no electricity. We supported Sarah Gansey, making sure she had the help she needed for a long-distance move back to Virginia. We stood by Ms. Valerie and Dontavious Moore and I'm happy to say that I met Mayor, uh, on the, uh, property that day with Mr. Dontavious when we were out there doing the work. I'm happy to report that we've stood by them every step of the way from the leasing offices to the moving trucks and we're just waiting now for the approval. We've walked alongside Dana Allen, a hard-working young man, making sure his transition was smooth and supportive. And finally, then there's the name, Mr. Thomas. I met Mr. Thomas door-knocking. And as I knocked on Mr. Thomas' door, I could clearly see when he opened the door, he had a disability because he was a much bigger man than me, but he could not stand up straight. And so, I could see how much pain he was in and I asked Mr. Thomas, "How can we help you?" He says, "Man, I just need to be moved and I can't afford it." So I called Mr. Thomas back maybe two days later, just to let him know that we had his move date for him. And Mr. Thomas on his way for medical treatment at the time, I heard a big sigh on the phone of relief that even in all his distress, he had some relief here. And I would like to say, finally, that it was on this Sunday in the rain that we made sure that Mr. Thomas was moved, relocated safely, without incident and with relief. We just want to say that it's all about action and action is all about love and that's what it means to show up for one another. My name is Pastor Brian Webb of the Faith Walkers Community Church. I thank you all for your time and your attention.
Thank you, sir.
So, um, councilmembers, we just wanted to give a recap of what's going on boots in the ground. This is a unique situation, uh, when you have many people that are being displaced. So, with the time constraints that we had, we put this team together after the councilwoman had made it aware of our attention. Um, and we're here to answer any questions. I think that things are moving forward. I know that we have, uh, someone from the ownership, the new property owner, who's working with us to, uh, bring some information and share some updates and then we can take any questions. So, if we, if you'd like to come up and give some information on behalf of the, the, uh, new management, the new owner.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can y'all hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Brandy Jackson and I represent Chelsea Gardens Apartments in College Park. I began working at Chelsea Gardens just months before new ownership took over in March twenty-twenty-five. From the moment new ownership arrived, it was clear that the community was in a deteriorating state. Residents were living with water and sewage leaks, broken HVAC systems and serious structural issues. No one should have to live in those conditions. These conditions were documented in a seventeen-page citation issued to previous ownership by the City of College Park's Code Enforcement Division in October twenty-twenty-four. While the original plan was to make repairs while residents remained in place, the severity of the damages forced a difficult but necessary decision to temporarily close the community for comprehensive repairs with the goal of reopening as an affordable, safe and revitalized rental community that the citizens of College Park can be proud of. Since day one, we've been committed to supporting our residents. We've covered hotel stays, provided food and water and offered relocation assistance. This included negotiating with over twenty nearby apartment communities to offer exclusive specials to Chelsea Gardens residents as well as waive or discount moving costs like application fees, risk fees, security deposits and even rent. Over fifty residents have moved into one of those partner communities. We initially offered to pay moving costs around forty thousand dollars for seventy-two residents with current accounts. That offer was later extended to all residents regardless of account status. To date, fourteen residents have accepted and completed their move using our assistance to pay for moving costs. An additional nineteen residents have either accepted the offer or are waiting for their new homes to be ready, with moves scheduled by May thirty-first. Meanwhile, thirty-nine residents who received the initial offer to, offer chose to relocate independently, declining our assistance. We've also waived or written off outstanding balances for many residents upon key return and processed nearly twenty thousand dollars in security deposit refunds, including for those with one to two months of unpaid rent. Our mission is to be a force for positive change in College Park. Chelsea Gardens has committed an additional twenty thousand dollars to the City of College Park to help citizens in need. In the near future, we will be providing a statement about the good work we're doing both at Chelsea Gardens Apartments and within the City of College Park. Thank you.
So, what we are seeing is a team approach. We're seeing the owner stepping up, we're seeing the city, um, step up. We're seeing, um, the nonprofits step up to help address this. So this is definitely a team approach. The owner, uh, just committed to twenty thousand on top of what the city has put toward this. Uh, but this is definitely a fast-moving emergency and I think in totality, I believe and feel that the team effort approach that we're doing is, is making in the fact, uh, we're helping people, uh, we're not putting people out in the street. And so, we implore our council to continue to assist us and continue to assist this effort. Um, we're here to take any questions that you may have.
We'll start with Mayor Broton.
Uh, yes, I, um, have several questions. I wanna preface my comments and then questions with the fact that I have ran, uh, I'm also, I'm a pastor, chaplain, I've run nonprofits for over thirty years, uh, been in ministry for over forty years. So I am totally concerned about the needs of our community. Formed an organization back in two thousand and nineteen for the City of College Park called Ignite Resource Center, which the city is in contract with currently. And their, their responsibility to our citizens is to get people the resources that they need, get them to the resources and the city has been paying this contract for, I think this is the fifth year now. Um, we also, that organization was in place when this happened at Chelsea Gardens. However, we were, they were prohibited from coming on that property. So, um, tell me a little bit about your organization and you, not the other, but what do you do? Or what is your, what is your role that you play in this collaboration?
Sure, that's a lot to unpack, so let's start with that. Um, Community Growth Partners was asked and hired by, um, Sage Hands to be a liaison to individuals like yourself, the, the council and the city and the nonprofits that are on the ground. Not aware of any other nonprofits that were there.
Well, that's because they were told that they, we were, we were told that we could not be. I was told that I couldn't be on the property as well. So, um, which is very disappointing because that is what my life is about. That's what got me to this place that I'm sitting at right now, community service. Okay, so you say Community Growth Partners is working with Sage and Faith Walkers, is that, or you're working?
Sage Hands International, which is the gentleman that spoke. Sage Hands International.
Okay, I'm just trying to get the, the understa- okay, the understanding. Now, uh, some of my questions may not be geared to you unless you can answer them. We may have to have some of the other folks. I very clearly heard Brandy, who is the, uh, works in the office there at, uh, Chelsea Gardens, say that Chelsea Gardens is paying, the owner of Chelsea Gardens is paying for the moving of all the residents. And I know that's true because I sat in a meeting with him and the city attorney and the city manager and Councilman Karn and code enforcement, and several others who I will not name that are in this room. And he said to us that he would pay the moving expenses. So I guess my question is, I love the collaboration, I love what you all are saying you're doing and I heard you say thirty-three thousand dollars. Um, but how, why hasn't that bill not been given to the owner of the property who said that he is the one that would pay for this?
Ma'am, with all due respect, that might be something to take up with the owner of the property. I'm not aware of that. I was challenged by the councilwoman to help address the situation that's on hand currently and that's what we've been doing.
Okay, and I see it, I see here, um, and I've looked through the contract that there is a two hundred and fifteen dollar an hour fee for the moving, moving, moving of individuals and that there's an eight-hour pretty much minimum or what we're looking at, the eight-hour to be billed, which is about seventeen hundred and twenty dollars. Okay, that is for moving. So, the question is, why are we asking the City of College Park to spend taxpayer dollars to do what the owner of the property has already pledged before many witnesses and including his office manager has just said? I just, my, my job is, I wanna help, but I'm a steward of the finances of the, of the City of College Park. Every single taxpayer dollar makes me, means something to me. And so, I have to be able to wrap my mind about around, what services are you providing that we have said that has come up to thirty-three thousand dollars? And who and when, if you felt that the City of College Park was going to pay this, how did you get a guarantee to move forward and to utilize thirty-three thousand dollars without having a word from this council? Because anything over nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars in this city that gets spent, it has to go through this body. So, I'm just trying to understand. Um, I still don't understand how the property was condemned without, uh, several members, uh, three of the, members of the governing body even being informed. And I'm, and as far as the property being condemned, the property should have been condemned years ago. Okay, I hear what Brandy said, you know, she came on there, she saw what it looked like, but I saw what it looked like. I've been on that property since two thousand and nineteen, serving people. And I, it's just interesting to me now that nonprofits would be interested in helping with the moving, but when people were struggling and living under these conditions, there was no voice and there was no assistance. But it is what it is and we are where we are. So, let me ask a couple more questions because you don't have to answer that question because I don't know if there is an answer for it. I heard a few things. I heard the word emergency. Emergency to me is like the house is on fire. This is an emergency. Persons who have lived on this property for ten, thirteen or maybe two years were given, not sixty days when the new owner came on and then when the City of College Park got involved, there was a seven-day, they were, and it was condemned, they were given seven days. And that was part of the meeting that I had with the owner and all the persons that I mentioned to you because it was like seven days. That is ridiculous to think that anybody can up, "I can't move, I can't clean my garage out in seven days, let alone have to move my house." And so, we spoke with the owner, I spoke with the owner, along with other members of the city. And we told him that we wanted to have till May thirty-first for persons to, to move out. But even with that, that was an emergency because at that point in April, it was still only about forty-something days. If something is emergency and you take ten days to plan how you're gonna address an emergency? There were, there were people on, there were boots on the ground way before those ten days, helping people. Okay, so that's why some people may have said they didn't need help because they might have already been helped. But I'm saying ten days and then what I'm looking at right now in this presentation for those that have shared, I only see about seven or eight days worth of work and the numbers just aren't making sense to me.
Ma'am, if I'm, if I may.
Yes, you can go ahead.
Yeah, I, I don't know if you're looking at the same information that we're looking at, but we have detailed pictures, videos, testimony from every single person that we've helped. And if you, you've been there, as you said, since twenty nineteen. I mean, this emergency hasn't been something that's happened overnight. I mean, we are addressing this as it came to us as an emergency.
I understand.
It's probably been an emergency since twenty nineteen with probably other, you've mentioned Ignite or other organizations. I can't speak for them, I can speak what we've done.
Yes.
Since we've been here.
Yes, and I understand, but based on what, again, I'm a decision-maker, okay? You're making, you're doing a workshop, making a presentation.
Sure.
I don't have that information. I don't have those videos, I don't have those testimonials. I do would like to know where Stephanie Davenport was relocated to, that's the question that I have because from what my understanding is, she was relocated to a storage unit for her things to go. But where, what home was she relocated to?
So, part of the assistance and part of that assistance is moving individuals who don't have a place to go and this is through the city's, uh, efforts to pay for their storage. I personally have been in meetings with the law director, with actually some of the members of council at Chelsea Gardens. So we've been coordinating these assistance efforts for quite a while. I don't know if it's not been conveyed, I think this is the first update that's been going on since we've been involved. So, that's why it's a lot of information. Um, but we can give you detailed information and have a packet of detailed information of every single move as well as receipts, as well as everything else. I, and you'd mentioned about moving, I don't know when the last time anybody's moved, but that two hundred and fifteen dollar average an hour, um, that's also including packing assistance. That's including moving, that's including an all-day event. So, yes, we have all that documentation, of course we would have that.
I mean, that's fine, that's fine. I, I, I mean, it's not about the cost of moving, it's the fact that the city is being asked to pay for the moving. That's, that's what I'm saying. It's, it's not, you all can, you can charge five hundred dollars an hour to move. I, I'm, I'm just saying, you could spend that amount of money, that's fine. But I have not been informed as a member of this governing body about anything but the owner being the one that has been tasked. So my thing is, the presentation, as far as I'm concerned, should be given to the owner and not to the City of College Park. Um, you say under Stephanie De- Davenport's name in this report, you say- you say completed relocation for Stephanie and her daughter. I think it would be more clear to say that we moved her belongings into storage because completing relocation means that a person is not staying in a hotel tonight or last night, that they're not homeless, you're not relocated if you're still homeless. So I may seem like I'm being very difficult because I am, okay? Because I'm tasked with a responsibility that is not an easy one. If it was, everyone would do.
Absolutely.
And that's why I said at the beginning that I have a nonprofit background. I have a heart for service and the people, but I also have a heart for every single tax dollar that comes through the city of College Park. So my concern with this, and this is not going to be my concern when we get into the next piece of this meetings, is I am totally in the dark, except for the fact that I understood that there was supposed to be a contract for nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. And then it got changed to a fifty thousand dollar and here we're sitting with an eighty-six thousand dollars. And I still don't understand how that's going to be used because I'm hearing twenty-seven people, then I'm also hearing other numbers. I'm looking at these stats that you gave us. Five said they, uh, you, you knocked on seventy-two doors. Of those seventy-two doors, forty-eight no answers. Uh, five didn't need help, thir- only thirteen said they needed help and six said they needed more time, which gets to our number of nineteen. But based on eighty-six thousand dollars being spent for nineteen moves, comes out to four thousand, five hundred and twenty-six dollars a move. Well, this is based on the information that we had. I see you shaking your head, you can come up and speak if you'd like to.
Yeah, I think-
Um, but I need clarification because I'm just, if it's nineteen people, if it's thirty-two people, or units, we're still looking at three, two thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars. It does not come out to the seventeen, twenty. And I just need somebody to make it make sense.
Yeah, I'd be happy to bring up, uh, the individuals. We can break down each, if we have the time, we can go over each and every move tonight. I have no, we don't have a problem with that. I mean, it's very transparent what we're doing, so.
I, we have ten items on the workshop agenda.
Sure.
So I'm not certain that we do have the time for that level of detail in the workshop. So Mayor Proton, if you have additional questions, sir, if you can get that information to us, um, I think that would, that would be a, a better use of the time, but I, I want to make sure that you get the remainder of your questions answered.
Okay, so basically I won't have my questions answered before the city council meeting this evening. And so this, this is not good.
Is your question that, just so I can, maybe we can try to answer that in the time we have, but is your question to be able to justify each and every move? Because we have that documentation for you, if that's your concern of justifying the moves versus the expense?
No, my, 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 I haven't changed. I just asked you questions on other things. I want to understand why if the, the property owner, the only thing that I have heard as a member of the governing body of the city of College Park, from the property owner's mouth and his manager just now, is that he is paying for the moves. So why is your organization standing before my city council asking for taxpayer dollars for what a private property owner who is in his best interest to have the persons moved? Why are you asking us for money? My thing is if there was something else, other services that you all may be able to give in terms of assisting people after their relocation? But my understanding is, and again, I did, I'm not, I'm not saying hearsay. This beautiful lady right here just now said-
Point of order, Aunt Mayor.
That the owner is paying for that. So I don't understand why we're here right now, except for to get an update on what your organization has been doing at Chelsea Gardens.
Councilmember Arnold, I think you might be able to shed some light on this?
Thank you. Um, it was to my understanding and I do believe, uh, Councilwoman McKenzie, you mentioned earlier that you are a part of the meeting with, uh, Mr. Gilchrist, city manager, city attorney, um, some other individuals from the city and one of our colleagues in putting together a, um, scope of work that was needed to address the, the services that were needed for this crisis. And so, uh, in that scope of work, there was to be collected information on the cost that it would take to move a person. And so that data was collected to be able to get a breakdown of what it was going to be per move. Now, it's also my understanding that that cost or that breakdown per move is what was provided to the city attorney's office to a maximum of fifty moves, which is where the total of the eighty-six thousand dollars comes to. Does not mean that it will necessarily be that amount. It means that that is what the maximum would be if we moved fifty families. So it's, uh, from what I understood, um, is that this particular nonprofit has already used their resources based on the scope of work that was given to them. And I gave them that scope of work simply because this is what they do. They specialize in moving people. Um, I understand that Ignite was already, uh, contracted with the city for resources to citizens. However, Ignite is not a moving company. This organization moves people, that's what they specialize in, which is why I requested for them to be on site so that we can move as quickly as possible for the citizens that were in distress. And so hopefully that answers a couple of your questions. It may not, you may still have questions and concerns. But this is, uh, again, to the maximum amount of not that we will necessarily spend all of that money because we may not make fifty moves. Thank you.
Um, point of, I, I don't know what you were talking about, the councilwoman, in terms of, I don't know who Mr. Gilchrist is. I've never been in a meeting with a Gilchrist, the, if, if I did, I don't know who he is. Um, this is a meeting that was held, uh, the day after the city issued a condemnation, well, that we saw the condemnation after I saw the letter. And this was a meeting and, but furthermore, I, I do contracts with persons in the city. And I do not get them working to, towards that contractual amount. If that contractual amount is, until a contract, first of all, is put together and until the contract is approved. So if anybody sitting in this audience was under the impression that you would be compensated for what you were doing without having a contract for that amount and without having this body vote to approve that contract, you've been lied to and you've been deceived. And I'll just put that there. The key here is the owner is still stating that the owner will relocate and pay for the moves. And so fifty, twenty, ten, the owner has that responsibility. If I'm going to give money from the city of College Park's coffers, and I will discuss that later in the next piece of this meeting about exactly where this eighty-six thousand is coming from, okay? But if I'm going to give money, I am not going to give money to an owner or, or take on his responsibility that he gave with his word. Furthermore, I am not going to approve eighty-six, up to eighty-six thousand dollars unless you get paid as you go. This contract does not say you get paid as you go. So once we, city, persons who are listening to the sound of my voice, endorse an eighty-six thousand dollar con- uh, contract, that money goes out the window if those individuals have received that eighty-six thousand dollars. So I don't care what anybody says about up to. If it's up to, you get paid as you go.
Any other questions? Mayor Proton?
No, ma'am.
Mayor, if I may, I just wanted to point out that I thought Councilwoman McKenzie, you were in the email chain of the scope of work that we were putting together. We've been on the ground after we got the charge in April sixteenth, trying to put this contract together. And I believe that scope of work was expanded by yourself in the meeting that I wasn't involved in. So I was just getting the information that I had-
No, sir, having received the email, didn't I receive?
I'll share with you.
Did I respond?
You were, it was, I thought, maybe I can correct-
If I didn't respond, that means I didn't-
Hold on, hold on, both of you were talking at the same time.
Yeah, I, I thought it was your additional, uh, comments that en- enhanced that scope of work.
No, sir.
Okay, well, we can obviously talk about that.
Councilmember Khan?
Uh, well, I'll just be brief. Uh, thank y'all for coming out in the church. You said you're in Atlanta? What, what side of town, southwest, southwest or?
We're actually all over. Sir, I'm sorry, because we're, we're being, because we're broadcasting, you have to speak into the microphone if, so everyone can hear.
Yes, so in two thousand and nineteen, I was pastor of the historic Butler Street Baptist Church for two years after COVID. Then I launched out and I started, uh, Faith Walkers Community Church. We are, we look at ourselves as a mobile organization, so we're not resided to any county, any state. But where we are based at in Atlanta, Georgia, and we look to work with not only College Park, for the county, DeKalb County, Lathony, all over. Anywhere we can have a reach and impact.
Okay, I was, I was just curious because I, I'd never heard of you. But it sounds like it's a good group of folks and y'all look like y'all really-
We've got some people out here now.
Yeah, are, are you, you ever heard of Concerned Black Clergy of Metropolitan Atlanta? Well, uh, I, I'm a member of that organization. I'm not a clergy member, but I would definitely suggest that, that you, that you join as a church. I think that'd be a good, especially they're more outside of the pulpit in terms of action and, uh, that sounds like it might be right up your alley. So, um, if you have, we have, I guess there's contact there. Okay, um-
Thank you, sir.
Uh, I'll just say briefly, you know, twenty-one thirty-five, uh, Chelsea Gardens was one of the primary reasons that we established the multifamily task force. Um, that was a project that I spearheaded, um, uh, years ago. And, uh, when, when I got back here in twenty-two, I served as Fulton County Commissioner from two thousand and nineteen until twenty-one. Um, our apartment complexes were unacceptable. I did an op-ed article in the South Fulton Neighbor that was titled, "Our, Our Multifamily Standards Are Unacceptable." I've been fighting for this issue and on this issue for many, many years. And, uh, we were, thanks to the new council, we were able to establish some multifamily ordinances that tightened things up on blighted properties and on slum lords that had properties for years and refused to, 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 to bring them up to standards. Um, so we tightened the, 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 the notches a bit. It got to a point where we wouldn't allow new rentals to take place at all and, uh, because it was just unacceptable to rent. So I think, I think it's good that there's some collaboration, you know, with what's going on. Uh, we need everybody to, to, to throw in, uh, you know, put something in the hat on these items with what we're dealing with here. Uh, and I don't know what the estimated, uh, what the estimated contributions or total cost, you know, towards accommodating residents at Chelsea was from the owner's standpoint, but I'd like a total number of that. Um, this is a very, very critical situation. And our multifamily policy was either fix them up or close them up. And that's what we've been doing in several, uh, high-risk properties that we categorized that were really, uh, not up to standards at all. So we're working towards progress, but this was a result. That former owner who refused to renovate, who refused to fix up, uh, you know, eventually he could not rent. We did apartment sweeps and we discovered things that were unacceptable. So eventually, uh, they, uh, let the property go. I guess it went to, back to the bank or foreclosure or receivership or whatever have you. But, uh, I'm glad we're finally getting some renovations and some, some stuff done there. But the transition is, is, is crucial. Uh, it's a very crucial situation and we're very concerned. Uh, some would consider it, city manager, you know, I guess, an emergency situation, so to speak. Uh, I would suppose that if you live there, it would probably look like an emergency, I would imagine. Um, but, uh, let's just try to get to it, let's do what we can. Uh, this is not something that the city can fix alone. And I tell residents this all the time. If you're counting on the city to resolve all of the community problems, any city, you're going to be let down because it takes community partnerships to solve these problems that go beyond the scope of city functioning. So we all have to work together and everybody's got to grab a shovel and get to work on this thing. And it's going to take a lot of work. Uh, I, I was asked to come to a meeting a couple of months ago. It's not my district or area. I guess I was probably asked because I've been fighting for the decent standards in the apartment corridors, you know, for, for, for some years. But, uh, you know, I, we need to, we need to, we need the help, we need to get going on this. And, but everybody needs to throw in on this, so I'll leave it at that.
Councilmember Arnold?
Thank you. Uh, first of all, I want to apologize for the treatment that you all have received thus far, Mr. Gilchrist, Mr. Watson and Pastor Webb. Um, I appreciate the fact that you all have put together a rapid response to the citizens that live in Chelsea Gardens. Um, this has been an emergency and, uh, and I do understand that you all had had discussions with the city manager, city attorney in reference to the work that you had started on already. So I apologize that, um, the way that the discussions have taken place so far, especially when we have, uh, we, just a couple of weeks ago, uh, gave a nonprofit organization eighty thousand dollars, forty thousand dollars upfront for them not even providing any detail, any numbers, any receipts. And so I, again, apologize for this discussion because it's not supposed to be going this way if we are really truly concerned about the citizens. Uh, please keep up the good work. Uh, we definitely want to help our citizens. Thank you for working with the owner to get a commitment, a financial commitment to go towards, uh, some of these costs that are being put on the citizens, excuse me, put on our taxpayers. Yes, I ask that we pay atten- pay special attention to those individuals who were senior citizens, disabled and, um, um, senior citizens, disabled and veterans. And so, and I, I understand that that's what you all have focused on. I appreciate the work. I am in support of it. I do believe that the owner does have some responsibility as well. I heard, uh, Ms. Brandy come up earlier and say that the owner has committed. He has also made some moves and he's committing additional dollars. And so I thank you all, all of you all, for the work that you've done.
Councilmember Gay?
No comments.
I have a couple of questions, um, but, uh, for Ms. Brandy, I, I did not get your last name. It's so, if you wouldn't mind.
Brandy. Ms. Brandy?
What is your last name?
Jackson.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, so you said that the owner was going to commit twenty thousand dollars for citizens in need and give that to the city, is that what you said?
That's correct.
And how is that, when is that payment coming through and how is it coming through?
I can find out. According to what I understand, there will be a check written to the city of College Park. As far as the date, I don't have that information.
I believe that is, uh, right now with your law department, I believe that that number has been passed on to the law department and you might want to ask.
Madam Mayor, we, uh, drafted an MOU that we forwarded, one of my associates forwarded, uh, to, to the city this afternoon, this morning, an MOU outlining, um, the particulars.
Okay, all right, so we'll, we'll see that at a, at a later meeting perhaps. Uh, and Ms. Jackson, I just got an email at six oh five PM from a resident of Chelsea Gardens. She asked, "Sorry to disturb you again, but they've turned off the water again. And unfortunately for me, I need to change my ileostomy bag. So now they are putting people's health at risk because they feel like we aren't moving out fast enough. Why is the water getting turned off?"
We sent residence notification last week that we're doing repairs on the water this week. And the water's been back on since, to my knowledge, five-thirty this afternoon.
I got this email at six oh five.
I understand, I, I would have to go over there and see why that particular resident has no water and we can go from there. But we notify our residents before we turn any water off unless there's some sort of emergency or damage or something. But they were notified last week and we have water in the office available for them during the times that it is off. But we pulled permits and everything and the city has come back and turned water back on tonight.
So to your knowledge, the water is on-
Yes, ma'am.
Right now. Are you going back there this evening?
Yes.
Can you please check on that?
Sure.
All right. I think those are all the questions I have. I want to- I think those are all the questions I have. I wanna thank Councilmember.
Next agenda item presentation from Style Mob University. This item is requested by Councilwoman Tracy Arnold.
Hello.
Good evening.
Alrighty. Okay, I'm gonna take a deep breath because that was a lot. If I could just ask everybody else to kinda recenter so we could lift the vibration in the room. Alrighty, good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, and, and the City Manager. My name is Tiffany Nicole and I'm the founder of Style Mob University, a school of cosmetology studies located right here in the heart of College Park. I stand before you today not just as an educator or a business owner, but as a community builder. As for someone who believes in the power of the people, potential, and purpose, we are more than just hair. Cosmetology is often viewed as just beauty, but we teach way more deeper than that. It's a science, public health, economy development, and a career transmision, sorry, a career transformation. Our students study chemistry, learning how to safely work with hair, relaxers, and skincare. They study biology, understanding the scalp condition and skin disorders. And way more important, they are trained in sanitation, safety protocols, and the protection of every client that sits in our chair. This isn't just about beauty. This is about preventing infections, building trust, and protecting lives. Cosmetology is essential to our economy. Across the country, beauty industry generate billions of dollars and support millions of jobs. Here in College Park, Style Mob University is already playing a vital role. We've moved students into our city, young people who now live, shop, and contribute to the local economy. We've helped launch new salons, beauty businesses that create jobs and pay taxes. And we've offered affordable beauty and wellness services to people that live in our communities. But we didn't stop there. We're also building a po- a pipeline of purpose. Through our nonprofit, Diamond's Foundation, we've expanded our mission to go even further. We run a summer camp that introduces youth to entrepreneurship and career pathways that they never knew exist. We offer scholarships and grants to young adults and for those who's interested in earning a license and entering a workforce environment without them going into a college debt. And we do all of this in a non-traditional way, a hands-on approach that prepares students for real success in life. Together, Style Mob University and the Diamond's Foundation are changing lives, but we cannot do it alone. This is where the city comes in place. We are asking College Park to partner with us. We're asking for recognition and official work, as an official workforce and community development ally. We're asking for the city access to resources, grants, visibility, and the opportunity to grow. We're asking for the support in raising awareness about the importance of being a licensed beauty professional, the importance of beauty education, and the risk of unregulated services. And yes, we are asking for your help in giving donations and funding for more scholarships, more grants, for a safe place for our youth. Let's build the future together. We are not just another beauty school. We are a safe haven. We are a, a lunch path for careers. We are a lifeline for youth and young adults who need an alternate path for their future. With your help, we are expanding our impact. We make, wait, I'm so sorry. Wait, we gotta skip the page. We make sure that College Park is not just a, we are making sure that College Park is just not a place where people live, but where people can rise. Let's show the world what it takes for, when a city invests in education, entrepreneurship, and empowerment. Support Style Mob University and the Diamond's Foundation as we support College Park. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We'll start with questions, Mayor Breton.
Um, thank you so much for coming and sharing. We know you've been trying to get on here for, for a minute and we're glad you finally made it in. Can you tell me a little bit about, I know that the contractual amount, and I'm pulling up the contract, looking for it actually right now, is seventy-five thousand. Can you tell us a little bit about how that seventy-five thousand will be used?
Yes, that seventy-five thousand, we have graduated students from Skyview and Bannerford High School. The seventy-five thousand would go to scholarships and grants for students that are attending those schools. Our student housing, help them in housing in College Park because we do currently have housing in College Park as well and with their education.
Okay. Um, could you provide us with kind of what that scholarship would look like? Meaning, are we talking about, uh, one month? Is it a, a, uh?
You mean what our curriculum looks like?
Yeah, what kind of?
So just, um, to give you a highlight of what cosmetology education look like, our longest program is about twelve months. Our students go through an distinguished program of learning chemistry, biology, health, sanitation, and community, um, public health.
Okay.
Uh, they're in school. It's, we're nationally recognized as a regular college. You know, our focus is entrepreneurship, career development, and, and cosmetology development. But our school is nationally recognized, is post-secondary recognized, so we are a traditional college.
Okay.
In a non-traditional state.
So tuition for that twelve-month program, approximately, what would that be?
So our tuition, it ranges up to twenty thousand dollars for our master cosmetology. Our lowest tuition is our educators program, which is seventy-five thousand dollars. I'm sorry, seventy-five hundred dollars, yes. So it will range from seventy-five hundred to twenty thousand. It gives the student the option to choose which program they would like to take.
I think what you're doing is wonderful and I totally support what you're doing. Um, how can you ensure to us that the, this, the funds that we're putting in will be used for scholarships or for assistance for persons who are from the city of College Park?
Uh, I think the best way to ensure that is for College Park to get actively involved. I mean, we are an active school. Um, we are in the community. Um, I saw you at several occasions. I'm all through College Park. Um, I'm down at Skyview High School often. What, I guess what we can do is what we do to, for the accreditation board. As they graduate, we send you the scholarship to let you know they've made it, you know? We keep them in the pipeline so we can see them through their full career. So even when they leave our school, they're in our alumni group. Our alumni group takes them through, um, job placement, career opening salons, and we would like to keep them here right here in the city, uh, so they can give back to the community.
Okay. So basically, I think I don't see anybody, well, communications, what I'd like for us to be able to do is for the city to put out advertising for this program. We'll work together with you, your organization, to, um, make sure that we are getting the word out and then keep up with, you know, you letting us know as this continues throughout the year, uh, what persons from the city of College Park are the recipients of these finances. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Councilmember Carron?
Uh, no questions.
Councilmember Arnold?
Um, I just wanna say thank you. Um, I've been, um, telling people about Style Mob University, um, from the moment that I realized that you were in College Park and in Ward Three. And so I, I'm glad that, um, that you, um, expressed the need and, and shared, um, the good work that you were doing with the students, especially over at Skyview, and wanting to expand on the ability for those students to have a pathway for a career. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gay?
No questions.
So from, from my perspective, I think it's, it's really important if the council sees fit to, to move forward with the partnership that we see the data.
Right.
As we, as we move forward. Uh, we heard about what's happening at Chelsea Gardens on, on a pretty granular scale. And so if we have an opportunity to come back, say in six months, to talk about where things are and how, how those funds have been used and, and just check in periodically. I think that would be great, not only for informing the governing body, but informing the entire community about how you're making an impact.
Yes, I would love it.
Oh, great. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Next agenda item, discussion on a request for a special event permit to host CCN Kick Fest by the Carrot Cartel Network on September sixth, twenty twenty-five, from twelve PM to six PM at the Jamestown Arena. This item is requested by Queenie Brown, Deputy City Clerk. This event is located in Ward Two and Four.
Good evening.
Good evening, uh, Mayor, council persons. Uh, I'm Jason Griffin, uh, CEO, founder of the Carrot Cartel Network. Um, inspired from my past work, uh, in the nonprofit sector. I'm actually a former faun- well, co-founder, but I divested as co-founder from the nonprofit OneWorldLink.org. We've been based in Atlanta for almost fourteen, fifteen years. A Title I social justice platform. Uh, I've been doing work in Macon, uh, goodness, all over the city of Atlanta, South Fulton, Nampolin County Public School Systems. Um, uh, pretty much, um, wanted to do something for, um, College Park, uh, bringing a fitness-oriented event, um, to the park. I've been in martial arts all my, pretty much, I could say all my life since six years old. Um, have a, a strong, um, association with the, um, martial arts instructors in College Park, Atlanta, and whatnot. So I mentioned this to them almost a year ago. Um, so here we are now with, um, seeing if I could, uh, gets, uh, an approval. Um, but we're gonna add martial arts, soccer, and I have, um, tentative partnership with a basketball, um, organization as well, uh, who deals with, um, bridging, um, Jade, uh, Junior One, um, players to potential overseas, um, experiences or pro experiences overseas. Um, it's, that's it in a nutshell. Uh, essentially, um, I did present, um, Queenie with, um, some digital media of our one-page of our mission statement, um, and the flyer for the event. Um, if there are any questions.
Start with Mayor Breton.
Um, I love it. I think it's great. We need to do everything we possibly can to get our kids, our youth in, in shape. Uh, this generation has caused them to, they'll stay all day in, in their room and they'll be on social media and games and stuff. So it's just good to get out and have some healthy sports. Uh, I really like what you guys are doing and I don't have any questions.
Council, Councilmember Carron?
All right. Thank you for coming out. Uh, see, this is, uh, first I saw September first.
Oh, it's September sixth.
On your document here, and then I see September sixth.
Yes.
Now, uh,
It's the sixth.
Six to six.
Okay, because Labor Day is September first. And, uh, okay, so it's moving from Mon- Monday to, to Saturday. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Is, is the Labor Day falling there? Was that the reason for the move?
Uh, we, we just rather, um, say complement than compete.
Okay.
With that momentum.
I figure you'd probably get more folks out on a Saturday than a Monday, but.
Exactly.
Uh, okay, so, uh, we see some expenses for the city here. Uh, you, are you gonna cover some of that with us there? I see, you know, police and fire, making sure we have, you want someone on site, like a EMS?
Um, as I, I discussed with Queenie, we don't expect, because it's our first launch, so we maybe expect maybe one to two hundred, um, people. Um, and she said that you all have a standard of, um, officer count per, like, there's a scale of officers per size of the event, right? So I, I, I told her that would be our maximum, like two hundred people. And she said normally they have requests, do they require that we have two or three officers out there?
Well, I think whatever, whatever the chief thinks.
Right.
Um, you know, we kinda follow her lead on that. Uh, you know, if, if they have it covered without extra, then, then, then I guess you're okay there. In terms of fire, obviously, they're there, you know, on call whenever have you in terms of fire issues, but this is a new event and, and we don't know what you guys are doing or, or a whole lot about each other, I guess. So I, I would just feel more comfortable if you at, at least cover an EMS person on site.
Okay.
Uh, just in case, you know, we've had, uh, we've had an incident, you know, with, with a group we've worked with for years, but this is the first time working with you, so you could understand we wanna make sure.
Indeed, and I, I got started with her. We would have no problem with that.
Okay, so city manager, we wanna make sure they, they, they cover at least the EMS person on site, just to see, see how it goes.
That's fine.
Uh, okay. Uh, all right, sounds, uh, sounds good. Y'all gonna clean up after you're done, right?
Hey.
All right.
Yes, you do.
Okay.
Councilmember Arnold?
Um, no comments. Thank you for the presentation.
Councilmember Gay?
Thank you all. Thank you all.
Uh, my only comments would be, we don't allow bounce houses. Secondly, I don't know if you can have an event without coordinating with our recreation because it looks as if you wanna occupy the basketball court and the soccer field.
That, that, well, or, we, she said we could use the, um, street soccer, uh, model. So if we can't use the grass, that's fine.
That, that Recreation Department has scheduled programs. I'm just simply saying, you need to coordinate with her. You need to coordinate basketball because what we don't need is for y'all over there having an argument with the guys and they're not even aware of it. I would say generally the parking lot is more appropriate, but we need to think through starting to use the, the park amenities for, uh, for events. And that's a new one on me. I welcome that. I mean, it's.
Well, what would be the next steps? Oh, not, I, what would be the next steps to, I guess, hash that out?
I just think.
Yeah, just to reach out?
Before we approve it or prove, prove a contingent that you coordinate this with, um, the Recreation Director, because the soccer field, it has ongoing programs and it's an active basketball. And you, it would be more appropriate if you did this in the parking lot. There are no restrictions there. But when you start moving into the spaces, that's, that to me is problematic without it being coordinated.
Okay. I wouldn't have a problem. Could I at least have that conversation with that, um, that department?
I'm sure Queenie Brown or the clerk can, can coordinate this with you all.
Okay.
Uh, but I need my colleagues to understand, we're not just gonna start having events on top of park activities. If that's the case, we can go over to Brandon or anybody apart and just go on their fields and just do what we wanna do.
All right. Councilmember Carron?
City manager, uh, I just wanna make sure when we're dealing with these, uh, outfits coming to the park areas, I understand booking this goes through the clerk's office. But when it, when, when you're dealing with the parks, I think it needs to go through both departments probably. Um, this was for, uh, permit, special event permit, but it, it involves the parks and recs program. It involves the, the pavilions because it affects everything over there in terms of what's already going on. Now, that, that's in Ward Two. Uh, so you're looking at this map here, you will be on, on the field, on the soccer field. Is that right? Not, not the basketball court.
Will be.
Uh, okay.
Hi, my name is Georgia Tong. I'm the Chief Marketing Director and co-founder of, um, Carrot Cartel Network.
If you could just make sure you.
Uh, I'm sorry about that. My name is Georgia Tong. I'm the Chief Marketing Director of Carrot Cartel. And the plan is to use the pavement. So on the diagram, you'll see we have a space for food vendors in the front towards the Herschel entrance on the parking lot space there and the open area beside the field. That, that dry area space there, that's where all the marketplace will be held there as well. And a lot of the activities will be held on the pre-mapped out, the tennis court on the lower level. And there's another court next to that. We're gonna use that space as well, but we're leaving the grassy areas alone. Uh, we had questioned to use the soccer field, if that was an option to use, and the question to use the basketball court, if that's, uh, available to use as well.
Two, two things. Uh, now, I'm okay with you being on the soccer field.
Okay.
But I'm not okay with you being on the soccer field if something is scheduled, Michelle, on that particular day. Now, that's a bit of a ways down the road, so I don't, I would imagine you don't, you may not have anything booked there. Then again, maybe you got something booked there. But, uh, if there isn't anything booked there, I'm fine with you having a portion of it on the soccer field because if it's a kick fest and exercise for the kids, city manager, I would also be weary of them being on the, the paved, uh, parking area because of the shape it's in, in terms of that activity. Now, setting up the, uh, you got booths or canopy tents and stuff like that, that's fine on, on the parking area, but having kids run around there, it's, it's, you know, it's not really ready for that kind of thing, but the field is. So I'm fine with us utilizing some of the field. Again, if Parks and Rec doesn't already have it booked for Saturday, September the tenth, I, I suppose. So, so, uh, uh, September the sixth. So, uh, yeah, yeah. So, so again, let, let's coordinate, city manager, with both of them and see what we got, because I'd rather them be on that field if, if there's gonna be kids' activities than be on that park. That parking lot's a little rough.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh,
And, um, let's.
And, um, let's, um, get together and with Queenie and we take a talk.
Okay.
Okay.
And that way we can iron out what you can do and what you can't do.
Sounds good.
And then let me give you. Yeah, let's, let's get together.
Thank you.
City manager?
Yes, sir.
Uh, when you get a date for that, if, if I do have some time, I may join you up just a couple of minutes or two.
Sure.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next item, discussion on a request for a special event permit to host farmer's market pop-up by Agro Culture on June fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, from ten AM to four PM at the Grassfield area at the corner of Riverdale Road, located in Ward Two.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Councilpersons.
Uh, citizens of College Park, my name is Keith Courtney. I'm with Agro Culture and I would like to get a permit or acquire permit for a farmer's market pop-up, um, due to our current climate. You know, I would like to do something where we have urban, urban farmers come out. Uh, the event is for community gathering, designed to promote urban agriculture, sustainable living, as well as local food systems. This, this event will bring together urban farmers, gardeners, chefs, eco-conscious vent, vendors and showcase homegrown products, DIY farming techniques and sustainable food practices. So what I'm trying to do is have a pop-up, have farmers come in, not only from urban, you know, local, but as well from all over Georgia. Um, we have fresh foods that'll be available for the citizens in College Park. Um, we'll have events, um, not, not events, but like, um, I guess I should be reading this, but, but, um, uh, like classes, so people can learn how to prepare these foods as well as learn how to farm, you know, even if it's in their, you know, apartments or whatever, you know, they can do something. Maybe somebody's growing peppers here, somebody's growing cucumbers over here, they could swap, you know. Again, it's something that I would like to bring into College Park and I know they're happening in other communities, but we need one here. I think we need one here. Um, so it's just, you know, just so we can get ahead of the game if something does happen. Again, because of the climate, we won't be caught behind the eight ball. We'll be, everybody will be informed in how to do something, how to, you know, feed themselves. So, um, I would like to get a permit to do this and this will be over adjacent from Phillips Park. Um, we're gonna have the farmers come in, they're gonna have their own setup, um, maybe some food trucks and then we'll have tents where we have classes. So.
All right. Well, let me see if there, there are any questions for you, sir. Thank you for the presentation. Mayor Porton?
Um, I became a gardener during COVID.
Oh, okay.
Because, you know, I wanted to make sure I had access to, uh, fresh fruit, fruit and vegetables and everybody, so much was going on and, uh, it has become something that I am passionate about. I don't do it enough. Uh, I don't get out in the garden like I, like I was able to then.
Right.
Uh, it's kind of interesting because I think it was our last council meeting or maybe two council meetings ago, we did have a person that presented about us getting a regular farmer's market here in College Park. So this is right on time because this kind of gives us the opportunity with this pop-up to see, you know, what kind of, you know, what kind of attention, um, we get. And, uh, so now in terms of, I noticed that you were saying that, um, so you're still looking for farmers. I mean, how sure are you that you're gonna be able to do this on June fourteenth?
Uh, I'm pretty sure I can get it done. I, I have access to that community. So, um, yeah, I, I'm pretty sure I can get, you know, I know it's not gonna be the biggest thing because it's the first one I'm doing. This is my first time doing it. Um, but I think once the word gets out, it may grow into something that hopefully can be done every quarter or something like that, you know, every season, whatever.
And your farmers, they will, or your vendors, they will pay some type of fee to your, your organization?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Carr.
All right, uh, I guess my first question is, where is your special event form? Uh, I saw it on the last item, but I don't see a form that you filled out on this item here. Uh, that form has your, you know, insurance information requirements and such and so on it. Uh. You see it?
I thought I saw.
Nah, I was having issues with the link, so I'm not sure.
Is it on the regular session agenda and not this one?
They, uh, did they fill out a special event form?
Hello. So for this one, no, cause this proposal was far more detailed than that form is, but also we are changing to a new form, which was a link and it was issues. So at the same time, and of course it's on June fourteenth, I just forego that. Now, the insurance, that will always be mandatory. Uh, once he's approved, he'll have to send that to me.
City manager?
Yes, sir.
That's unacceptable. Everybody fills out special event form to doing something like this. Uh, yeah, I think your project, Queenie, thank you. I think your project is, uh, good. I'm definitely for healthier lifestyles and nutrition and the whole nine, so I wanna see it happen here. Um, we were in the process of, uh, we were in the process of establishing event fees, uh, for the type of events that were a little too large to be held in our parks.
Okay.
Um, so we're still in process of that. Now, you know, you, you're talking about June fourteenth, so you, you, you're pretty, you gotta type ones to operate in here.
Right.
And I'm not against.
That's, that date can be adjusted.
Well, what, you know, what, whatever your date is, is what your date is.
Okay.
I think you need to get in here first thing tomorrow, fill out a special event form.
Okay.
Uh, where, where you get an understanding and, and whoever needs to check off on that. You expecting, it's like up to three hundred people, potentially a hundred to three hundred, I see on this?
Yes.
Well, I would ask, you know, since we do not have a, uh, an established fee, which we're gonna, we, we need to be working on because this is the problem that we've been having where there's some events that aren't, that are oversized for the parks and, uh, we just generally don't provide, you know, free spacing for folks.
Understood.
You're along the same number of the, same outfit that came before you. Um, so, uh, chief, uh, I guess police protection's gonna be around the same. Is that something that we, you can cover in-house without extra? Okay.
Chief, I'm sorry. Would you mind coming to the microphone? Thank you.
That would mean that an officer that's, that's not a, let me stop and see what's going on. They would have to have an officer there stationed there, so that would require to.
Okay. All right. Uh, in terms of the fire issue, protection of, I mean, this isn't an athletic thing, so, um, I suggested EMS, then they have covered EMS for that one because you're gonna have active stuff, but.
Okay.
You guys aren't really active, so, and you're doing a farm, so I'm a, I'm gonna, I'm gonna assume you're healthy. You, you got a, a crowd that's in.
Well, that's, yeah, that's.
All right. Okay, I'm not against it. I mean, yeah, uh, but, but, uh, yeah, let's make sure we fill out that form, make sure the insurance requirements are there and, uh, that we, we, we buy the book here.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Are you finished?
Oh, yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right.
Councilmember Arnold?
I think it's an excellent idea. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gay?
No question.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time.
Appreciate you.
Next agenda item, discussion on a request for a special event permit to host Nabar Temple and Nabar Court BBQ by Nabar Temple on July nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, from nine AM to five PM at Charles E. Phillips Park. This item is requested by Queenie Brown, Deputy City Clerk. This event is located in Ward Four.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, we bring you greetings from Nabar Court number one twenty-three and Nabar Temple number one twenty-eight. Well, I, uh, Nicole Bowen, I am the First Lieutenant Commandress, which is also like the, the Vice President of the organization. And this is my counterpart, which, uh, is like the Vice President of the male side as well. And so I wanna give you a little history about our organization. Um, we are part of the Imperial Court, which is a nonprofit auxiliary of female, my part, uh, family, members of the Prince Hall Shriners, and was formerly organized as the annual session of the ancient Egyptian Arabic order, Nobles of the Mistrick Shan. The Imperial Court is a charitable and benevolent organization. We provide services to, to help the disabled and senior citizens. The organization provides for effective networking among its members and other organizations, recognizes and celebrates the historic and current achievements of African-American women, um, exerts positive influence and utilizes the tool of role for modeling for youth, teenage mothers, high school, college students, and disassembles information for educational opportunities and career planning to youth and young adults. And so we are here today because we would like to have a special event, um, honoring the illustrious potentate and illustrious commandress, which is like the President of the organization. And we would like to have the park, which is our special event, which we will have tents and if possible, have a DJ there as well. And this is just a gathering, just showing the appreciation of, for the hard work that they have already done. They come before us, done a lot of work in the community. And of course, me and my counterpart have done a lot of work in the community as well, too. And so we will be honored someday, um, as well. But, um, right now, we're here to plan a special event for our President of our organization.
Understood. Thank you so much for the presentation. We'll start with Mayor Porton.
All right. Thank you for coming this evening and thank you for your presentation. Uh, so basically all you really want is to put up two tents and some tables and chairs and maybe a DJ.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Uh, and we also.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh.
No, no, you, I was waiting for you.
And we also was gonna rent, um, the pavilions, but the reason why we didn't do that yet is because we couldn't get a, a refund if we weren't approved here. So we're just waiting.
Okay, I was just saying this. Okay, that makes more sense then. Thank you so much. All right. You did answer my question.
Councilmember Carr?
Uh, how, how many of the, uh, thank y'all for coming. Uh, it sounds like a good, good, uh, event. Uh, how many of the pavilions are you gonna need? Because I see you got expected attendance, a hundred and fifty to two hundred folks.
We would like to utilize a lot of tents to cover a lot of areas as well, too. Just a couple tents. I know, I thought, maybe I heard someone say two tents, maybe just a couple other tents as well.
And city manager, this, this is why I think, you know, when this comes, it's a special event permit, but if it's at one of the parks, then, Michelle, Michelle, you need to, need to be involved with that, so you'll know exactly what, what we're talking about in terms of spacing or whatever they're gonna need. Um.
And we did fill out our special event form as well, too. We have that.
Yeah, I, I do. I see it in here. All right, I appreciate it.
And insurance.
All right. Well, I, 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 I'm okay with the event. I don't have an issue with it. Uh, I do think it would be good probably to get EMS coverage for this one in particular here as well, if you all are okay with covering the cost of that. I think it'd be good. Um, cause right as, as of now, there are, what are the fees? It's just a permit fee and that's it?
Councilman Carr, we did speak. We did speak. We spoke about the pavilion. So we have spoken and, and, and his request, I told to put in the special permits, cause typically the pavilions are for the residents. So that's what we talked about, to make sure that, you know, to put down exactly what they needed for the permit request.
Okay. And the pavilion rent use costs?
Correct. We talked, he spoke with Bryant and, and they talked about it, but they didn't wanna reserve it until they knew that they, you know, were approved. So, um, so that conversation was reached out. So we just spoke directly.
So, so how many pavilions are they gonna be?
I think they were looking originally at two. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Originally it was two, but then based on how many tents we can put up is really how many we would need.
Okay.
And also the availability, that was our concern. So I wanted to make sure that they reached out because, you know, it's high season and they could be, um, filled prior to that, so.
But, okay, well, y'all just work it out. I, I just, I, I do think, I feel better if they, if we had an EMS for that one, cause you, you, you're talking a pretty significant number of folks and just, uh, I don't think it would hurt if you all don't mind covering the cost for that. Uh, how long is your event for?
Uh, right now, we put on the paper from nine to five, but we also would like to know if it was possible for us to get there at least a little earlier than nine to set up.
Sure.
All right, well, just city manager and work it out, you know, I mean, it sounds like a good project. I'm fine with it.
Councilmember Arnold?
Um, no, no questions.
Councilmember Gay?
Oh, I don't have a problem with it. A couple, cause, a couple of comments. We might need for you all to come and identify the parking. That's an issue. We've had the shriners there before. In fact, our form of five trees, some of the guys are shrines, then Councilman Wise is a shrine. So we've had events there before, but I'm just saying you guys need to park and not, cause we don't have a lot of parking in the park. That would be my only concern.
We will control the parking.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, give me one moment. Um, we are seven minutes away from when we're supposed to start our meeting and we still have a number of really important issues to discuss. This workshop agenda is getting really, really long with a lot of stuff. We've gotta be able to pare that down because we're just running over every time, but we gotta get it done. So, next.
Madam Mayor, this next agenda item, the AI assistive technology, was requested to be removed, uh, from Michael Hicks. Mr. Hicks? So moving on to the next item, presentation by Mercer Health and Benefits Group for the Health Insurance Renewal Plan, year July first, twenty twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It is time for our health insurance renewal with, with our care provider and we have some representatives here that really wants to go into detail about the plan changes and some of the things that we want to do to be, um, very efficient in getting this taken care of. So I'm gonna give them an opportunity to present that information to you at this time.
Good evening, Mayor. Uh, Councilmember, City Manager. Uh, so my name is Sam Pierce. I am, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Yep. Uh, so I, my name is Sam Pierce and I'm with Mercer Health and Benefits, the consultant broker for the city of College Park. So I wanted to start with the seven-one renewal. So initially, Blue Cross or Anthem was projecting about a thirty-nine percent increase to your healthcare costs, so about, uh, almost one point eight million dollar gross increase to costs. A lot of that being driven by some of the poor plan performance, especially in the claims with over a million dollars in high-cost claimants coming in over this last period from when you just moved to Anthem for seven-one of last year. We did go out to the market. We looked at Aetna, Cigna, United Healthcare. Uh, Aetna and Cigna declined to quote due to the fact that you had just changed insurance carriers the year prior. Uh, and UHC did come in with about a twenty-eight percent increase. We were able to negotiate and bring Anthem down to about a twenty-nine percent increase, which I have here. Uh, ultimately about a one point three seven five million dollar gross annual increase. So with that, we started to look at other options. What can we do to help reduce that option for you and try to bring down that cost? One thing we noticed is the fact that your plan designs are almost identical today, so you're not really offering a lot of choice and not creating maybe a lower cost plan for those younger, healthier population that would actually benefit from taking home more out of their paycheck, but reducing and potentially opening themselves up to more cost if and when they need services. One of the big concerns is that cit- city government benefits are incredibly competitive, so it limits the amount that we can make those changes because ideally, you know, we can get a number to any number, but it means what level of insurance do you have in the process? And so with the fact that we know the offering quality healthcare is a key component and tenant of you all, uh, limited changes being made to try and create that choice. That then brought that down to about a twenty-five percent increase, which is still relatively high. One option we looked at was what Anthem calls their high-performance network. So basically, look, they look at and contract with a number of hospitals and doctors that they believe perform better. So they're following better adherence to care, they're producing better outcomes, lower concerns around complications in surgery, those kind of things. But the concern is the network becomes more narrow, uh, most notably Wellstar and Piedmont not being in the network, but with access to, uh, to Grady, to Northside, to Emery, um, and a couple, and a number of others throughout the state where they have that high-performing network. Ultimately, if you went that entire way, it's about a four percent increase, about a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, but we have concerns over the network access that you have a number of folks outside of Augusta, Columbus, sort of greater Atlanta, Sandy Springs, Roswell area that would have access to that network. So with that, what we are proposing would be for you to do, keep your, one of your plans that you had today with the broad access that everyone in the state has access to, and then also offering this high-performance plan. So if you had, do you have employees that say, hey, I've looked at my doctors, I've looked at the hospitals, I, I don't go to, to. I, I don't go to, to Wellstar, I already go to Grady, I already go to Emery. That that way they have an option to get cheaper and better care while also reducing the overall cost to you all, which would be about a gross increase of about eight percent. Within that, we then also looked at the contribution strategy and wanted to create a, a, a way that employees could be benefited by going to that high performance plan. They understand that, well, I might give up some flexibility, but I'm actually going to get a better plan. I'm gonna get a lower cost in total from that. So with that, within the packet that you received, we also did propose contribution strategies as well that would mean that your sort of company or employer cost would go up by just about, uh, seven percent. Um, and ultimately would then create a nicer spread for employees to really see the benefit between why they may pick one plan from another. Uh, from there, can stop to answer questions? Cause I know I've just gone through quite a lot of information right there.
Thank you so much. We'll start with Mayor Proton.
Um, I thank you for your presentation. I'm a visual learner, so it really would have been helpful for me on this one to actually have had something I could see. Um, we don't have anything in the workshop packet. Was there, is it in the, it's in the regular session agenda?
It is in the regular session packet.
Yeah, there's about a.
It's in the regular session?
It is.
Okay, so while you were talking, yeah, cause I'm, I'm in the workshop right now. And, um, but yeah, anything we, uh, I don't, I don't, I don't have any questions at this time. That was just my comment, but thank you for coming.
Councilmember Carron?
Uh, you mentioned the, uh, high performance network plan. You said that would yield an, an eight percent reduction? Is that what I heard? Or did I hear four percent?
So if you were to go completely with a high performance networks, you said both plans were going to narrow down the network. It's about a four percent increase to your existing costs, about a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars above where your current costs are today. The concern is that if you were to only go with that option, it would leave a number of members displaced and with disruption across their hospitals and their providers. So our recommendation is one that's on the network you're on today and one on that high performance network. And if people stayed in the plans they're in today, that would result in about an eight percent increase. The one concern is obviously that we don't know, for example, how many people may be impacted by that, how many people may shift, and really kind of what that physical number will be until after open enrollment.
Now, would that be an eight percent increase on top of the, what'd you say, twenty-five percent you got us down to?
Uh, so that'd be going from twenty-five to, to eight percent.
So it's a decrease?
Yeah, it's about a, so it's, it's still above your current costs. But instead of it being twenty-five percent above your current costs, it'd be eight percent above your current costs.
If you did the high performance network exclusively?
If you, uh.
Or the hybrid?
Yeah, one, one, uh, choice in each.
So y'all thinking the hybrid is what, what makes it sense? That way you got something for everybody?
Exactly, sir.
So that takes the cost down from what would have been a twenty-five percent increase to using the hybrid to an eight percent increase?
Correct.
Now, I, I've never seen a twenty-five percent increase ever since I've been up here come across in, in one year. So that was, that was pretty, pretty, so we must've had some pretty big claims. Cause we had, I know we had a, a, a big slew of, uh, uh, you know, open heart deals. One year it was about four, five of them came in a row and that was pretty, you know, that, that, that definitely bought, uh.
Yes, sir. And you had almost, uh, actually in excess of a million dollars in high cost claimants, including almost a half a million dollars for a cancer claimant. You had another almost hundred thousand dollar cancer claimant, um, uh, an atypical heartbeat that was two hundred thousand dollars plus, renal failure, a, a number of other, um, very nasty and high cost claimants. And part of the other issue is that from the move last year, it's not an uncommon practice that when a medical carrier is looking to earn your business, that they will price you lower than what really you should have been warranted for an increase. So last year by moving to Anthem, you actually kept your costs completely flat and neutral to where they were the year prior. Where originally Aetna was calling for about a twelve to fifteen percent increase in cost. So it's great that, you know, you were able to keep costs neutral last year. But unfortunately, that means that now when they look at you, you are unprofitable to them. They're paying out more in premiums than you, than, or in claims than they're receiving in premium. So it sort of compounds itself. And that's, one of the other things I think worth mentioning is that it is, you know, where doable. I understand that budgets can be difficult for everyone. Where doable, it is good to try and build a longer tenure with a, a carrier. It's good for members from a care management standpoint. But the problem is if you constantly move and sort of chase that lower amount, eventually that catches up because the claims aren't getting better and the care is being disruptive, that at some point you do have to weather that storm a little bit.
All right, I, I get it, you know, that, that was a teaser rate. Suck you in and, yeah, yeah, so. All right, well, uh, I mean, it sounds like that mix, sounds like it makes the most sense, I guess. Does everybody kinda?
Yeah, it gives something for everyone with access to everyone regardless of where they are in the state.
Well, that eight percent increase sounds a lot better than the twenty-five.
It certainly does.
All right.
Councilmember Arnold?
What, what would be the, um, average, I guess, savings, if you will, for, um, a person who decided to enroll in to the high performance network plan?
Yeah, and so savings from their payroll?
Yeah.
Um, and I apologize, I don't have that in front of me, but I can go back and pull it. But we, I'll have that for the, for the formal meeting to give you that idea. But ultimately, not only savings to employees, but it also means savings to the plan. So obviously now at open enrollment, but, uh, in health insurance, not to get too complicated with it. So there's discounts, right? So the carriers basically say, you, you know, a provider's gonna charge a hundred dollars, we get a fifty percent discount. So it only costs fifty dollars. When they get this high performance network, they have deeper discounts, sixty, sixty-five, sometimes even seventy percent. So it means that as your members are incurring claims, your actual cost of those claims goes down as well because they've negotiated better discounts to be part of this skinny down network. So the good news is that, I talked about initial increase of fifteen percent last year. Your initial increase this year was almost forty percent, that we got down to the twenty-nine and then to the twenty-five and now potentially to an eight. So it means that you're hopefully setting up the plan for long, long-term success, that you're able to get better access to these discounts so that we're not here a year from now where I'm telling you about a forty percent increase again.
Gotcha. Thank you. Councilmember Gay?
Oh, you don't have to answer the question full, but is there a correlation with the aging workforce with the, the amount of claims that we're seeing?
Uh, absolutely, sir. So, um, you know, typically when we, we look at insurance, we look at risk profiles. And a lot of that is based on demographics and, and age and gender being a very big portion of that. So young men, for example, are very low risk. They typically are lower utilizers of care, not a lot of chronic conditions unless they're a one-off case. And then typically we see that younger females, especially those in maternity, uh, ages typically can drive higher claims. In fact, you had a preclampsia, uh, claimant in your high cost claimants. As those populations get older, it actually switches. The, the older females tend to be better risk and are taking better care of themselves outside of maternity years uh, and typically have lower claims. But, but older men in particular do tend to drive higher claims. But, um, just, uh, to your, I'm assuming why your question came about, it's exactly what you're thinking. Older populations have more maintenance medications, they, they are starting to need replacements in hips and knees, um, more, uh, you know, categories of diagnoses that are coming up. So it is not uncommon for older populations to have higher claims cost.
Thank you.
All right. Appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Next agenda item, presentation of Medical Air Services Association access as a supplemental benefits for employees by Rose Stewart, Director of Human Resources and Risk Management.
Mayor and City Council, uh, we have, um, representatives here from Medical Air Services Association to discuss supplemental benefits for our employees who are having emergency situations. I think this is something that is very important right now that we, that we consider because it'll be a cost savings to our employees and we have no expense upon the city. And they're gonna, they're gonna explain the program.
Mr. Long, you're wearing a different hat this evening?
I am indeed.
Okay, so you're a lobbyist in, in one realm and now you are representing the Me- Medical Air Services Association?
I am simply a consultant for Medical Air Services Association and have been working with them for about not even three months now.
I see.
Yes, yes. Ms. Stewart, thank you very much, um, mayor and council administration. My name is Andrew Long, AR Long Company. I represent, uh, Medical Air Services Association. When they came to me, um, to help them, it became personal and I don't mind sharing this with you. Um, I can talk about gap coverage, I can talk about ambulance, uh, air and ground. I can talk about all the technical things. I'm gonna let, um, this gentleman here, uh, talk about that. But I'm just gonna say something real personal. My wife, Latonya, uh, Long, uh, not in twenty-four, but I think it was in twenty-twenty-three. Um, she was having trouble breathing and she called me. I came upstairs, I said, you okay? She said, no, I'm not okay. I said, okay, well, what's wrong? You know, she couldn't tell me really what was going on. I didn't know what was happening. Um, she wasn't having a heart attack, she wasn't having a stroke, but she, she looked sort of faint and was having trouble breathing. And so I said, well, jump in the car and I'll take you down to urgent care. She's like, no, no, I need you to call an ambulance. And I was like, wait a minute, are you serious? Are you hurting that bad? I said, what's now, and now I'm, you know, I like to be kinda calm, just jump in the car, let's go. And, um, I, I called an ambulance, um, we got to the hospital. It was literally a, a minor respiratory issue. She was fine, but obviously three weeks later, I received, uh, an envelope in the mail um, for about, I think it was twenty-seven hundred dollars. Um, and that was the ambulance fee that I had to pay. Um, if I, well, she works for Cobb County Sheriff's Office and she is the primary on the, uh, healthcare and the benefits and, and the insurance. If, which is voluntary, if she had selected to be with Medical Air Services Association, they would have paid that entire cost. That gap coverage of, of that twenty-seven hundred dollars, twenty-three hundred, or whatever it was, that would have been paid for in full by, uh, Medical Air Services Association. So let me introduce to you, um, Mr. Mark Miranda and he will give you a brief history of the company and, um, and let you know why we're here today. Thank you.
Mr. Long, how, how much did you actually end up paying?
Twenty-seven hundred, or whatever the total amount was. Yeah, we had to, um, I think the amount was obviously larger than that, but my portion of it was the, I think it was twenty-two hundred, twenty-seven hundred, something like that was in, it was over two thousand dollars. Um, and I had to pay it. Yeah, I had to pay the full amount of the portion that we owed. Yes, ma'am.
Madam Mayor, um, council members, good evening. My name is Mark Miranda, I'm the Regional Vice President for MASA. Uh, it's an easier way of actually saying it. We're a national organization, actually we're global. We cover about two point eight million members worldwide. And in the United States, we cover, um, a lot of groups similar to yourself. For example, we probably cover a little over three hundred thousand municipal, uh, and, uh, public sector employees. What we do is we are a supplement to your medical plan. Your medical plans, as you've heard, continuously go up every year. And one of the problems associated with medical is that ambulance services generally are covered under your medical plan. But it's very difficult to receive contracts. Um, the health plans out there are having trouble at getting contracts with the ambulance providers. What we do is we pay the hospital, we pay the deductible, the co-insurance, any type of balance billing associated with air and ground transportation. One of the nice things about MASA is we do not have a provider network. So we cover twenty-three thousand ground ambulance, we cover over three hundred air transport companies. And our core products generally will take care of you, uh, for all air, all ground. We cover hospital to hospital transfers and we cover something very unique. And that is anywhere in the United States and Canada. If you're traveling and you're, and you have an accident and you wanna get back to your home location, we will transport you back to your home location at a hundred percent as well. It's very simple. If you have your medical plan, uh, you'll generally, um, you'll then submit your claim or the claim is, is submitted by the, by the doctor. Uh, you'll get an EOB that'll say your responsibility. We don't even have claim forms. You send that EOB to MASA. We call the provider and say, uh, this member is our responsibility. Do not contact our member and we take care of the bill. Uh, we are very easy to be able to do it. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer it, but we are a product that is voluntary. So it's no out-of-pocket expense for the, uh, for the city. And the member has an opportunity. Generally in cases like this, we get about a thirty percent participation of people just wanting to make sure they're protected. Any questions?
Mayor Proton?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would have been great if you guys could have also supplied us with the ambulances as well.
Yes.
One of our issues has been being able to get the ambulance to us in time.
Absolutely.
But, um, what is the premium, is there the premium? Does it change by municipality?
No, uh, in the state of Georgia, we are, we are an insurance product in about seventeen states. Uh, the rest are membership. And in Georgia, it's a membership state. Uh, our product, our core product is fourteen dollars a month and it includes everyone in the family. So, uh, fourteen member, fourteen dollars a month will take care of you. And that product takes care of you from anywhere in the United States and Canada. We do have another product, wh- which is our premier product, which is nineteen dollars a month. And it'll even take care of you if you are in the Bahamas, Mexico, um, the Caribbean Islands and with the same products with an additional benefits of paying when you're sick and, uh, you're away from home or actually transporting like grandchildren home or your, your spouse home in case something happens. So we certainly can provide you with the benefit designs that, uh, that we're recommending.
So basically for less than two hundred dollars a year, uh, we, a person, if you had a medical emergency, in the case of Mr. Long's wife, uh, we could save twenty-two thousand or more dollars.
Yes.
I, a question for Ms. Stewart. This particular program, if an employee does not have regular health insurance through the city of College Park, cause we do have some employees that have their spouses, can, can they sign out, sign up if, if they're not a recipient of the regular College Park insurance?
Yes, uh, yes, uh, they do not have to have your insurance. They just have some, some form of insurance because we are a supplement plan. But, um, we're not, we do not require them to be a part of your medical plan.
Thank you. I don't have any further questions. I think it's a great pro- program, yeah.
Councilmember Carron?
All right, thank y'all for coming, uh. I remember about thirty years ago, I got a ambulance bill for around six, seven hundred bucks. And I was like, holy jeez, I couldn't believe it. But now I guess they're just astronomical, you know, twenty-five hundred dollars for, for an ambulatory ride. You said fourteen dollars a month, is it how, that's like seven bucks per pay period, is that right? And this is optional for city employees?
Yes.
And, uh, it costs the city zero?
Zero, yes.
All right, I don't have any questions.
Councilmember Arnold?
Great presentation. I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gay?
No questions.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
I do have a question. This is only for employees, right? No, our, our citizens couldn't, do you have a program that persons that live in College Park perhaps could sign up for?
We have a division within our organization that's an individual product. And, um, we do a lot of business in Georgia for individuals, specifically older population that maybe are retired and they wanna travel or, or are worried about the cost of emergency services. So, but we can provide you with some information on that.
I definitely would like that and be able to offer it to, uh, persons in the community. Yeah, thank you.
Last thing I add, uh.
Councilmember Carron, go right ahead.
Rose, we got open enrollment starting, what, what?
Yes, we have open enrollment next month. We have open enrollment in May.
Okay, I think it's important to, for, I guess, for your outfit to give a good explanation in terms of what, it seems like this is a tremendous benefit if, if you have an issue, obviously. But a lot of times getting over the learning curve where they can really understand what we're talking about here. And, uh, some examples of the kind of ambulatory bills at open enrollment, where we can understand if this is worth seven bucks pay period or not. I think, I mean, you don't need a slide rule to see that that's gonna be some amazing, even for my kids. So if my kid's on vacation in Chattanooga, Tennessee and sprains his ankle, you telling me they can call ambulance up there and they will cover transport where we wouldn't have to pay for the kid's injury?
Yes, exactly.
All right.
And we are going to have presented at open enrollment so that employees may be able to understand the, the benefits of it.
But make sure it's clear and, and it's understandable.
Sure.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next agenda item, presentation from Highway Streets and Stormwater Superintendent Raymond Cotton on inspection, evaluation and assessment methods used to determine pavement conditions and prioritization based on cracks, potholes and environmental factors that contribute to wear and tear.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Mr. Carron.
Good evening, sir.
I just put a package together just to, uh, to inform so the citizens of College Park also could be aware of the, uh, the information that is required when you're doing data requests. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, but I'm not sure about the back, folks in the back.
So when you're doing data, uh, data report for the streets that, uh, it required to be resurfaced and some of the data that I did, uh, what I used to do before when I came to College Park in twenty sixteen is the streets to be raised between zero to one hundred. And some of the things that I look for is like transversal cracking, allegra. And some of the things that I look for is like transversal cracking, allegra, alligator cracking, load cracking, block cracking, pothole raveling. As you see in the pictures, can you go to the next slide, please? That's the next picture where you got alligator cracking, pothole cracking. And those are some of the main roads that, that you review to determine what need to be resurfaced. Next slide, please. Right here, this guy has some alligator cracking where when you have alligator cracking, when you have rain, it penetrated up under pavement and caused the pavement to crack and deteriorate. So we had to go in and do some major patching on a couple of these, these streets. Next slide. Also you got right here, this is several streets that I had my guys to go out and take a look at. Like I got about a large pothole where the alligator cracking deteriorated that caused water to penetrate on that. So these are the type of streets that I look at to, to determine what streets need to be resurfaced in the city. Next slide. Right now it's a new program. We got out in there called BIDIT. I am, we are collecting data, let you know, I mean, Ward One collecting data. Then once the data collected Ward One, we'll move to Ward Two, Ward Three, Ward Four. It'll probably roll out in twenty-twenty-six because right now the list of streets that I have, East Coast Gray just got through with the list for the LMI G for twenty-four. I got the package back for the LRA, two hundred, eighteen thousand. That's the one with no match. You know, I had to do the background check and then I had to put it on the general break for the board to see if y'all want to continue to move with them, being the lowest bidder. And once that is approved, then I have to send that package to our city attorney to get the package together. So it's a process. So we kind of behind because we didn't have no person, personally persons to put the LR out, the RFP Iowa streets. So I got the, the LRA for twenty-twenty-four, also the LMI G for twenty-twenty-five. And tonight I put the LRA for the twenty-twenty-four. So I'm trying to get all these grants put out before it get cold. So hopefully everything go well and I can get it put out. And as soon as we collect all the data for the BIDIT, I'm going to have, I'm going to put it on the general so they can do a presentation. Because I don't think everybody's aware of it. And I think it's a good program. And on this BIDIT program, it's going to collect the data that every street that's in College Park, if it's a seventy-five and below, would be considered for resurfacing. Anything that's seventy-five and above would not get resurfaced. So I will, once I get that package, I will send it out to each council member. If y'all want to, you could choose what streets you want for me to put on there and we can move forward from there. Any questions?
Don't forget me on the, on the package because I'm just curious about the whole city.
Okay.
Thank you for sharing this and very, very good for us to hear this because we all have these streets that need to be.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, we're always looking at our streets and my, my, my residents are like, they want their street. But this helps us to give a quantifiable response in terms of, you know, with no one's, no preferential treatment here. So I want to thank you for sharing this technology and what you're doing and for those streets that are going to get paved in my ward. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all.
Councilmember Kern.
No questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Arnold.
I just wanted to say thank you for using the software. I'm glad to see that it's going to be helpful, especially with our planning going forward. So, thank you.
Councilmember Gay.
No questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cotton. Appreciate your time.
Next agenda item, presentation, city procurement policies and procedures overview by, by Veronica Brown, Purchasing Administrator.
Hi, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, good evening.
So I'm going to do a brief procurement overview for the city. So procurement requirements and regulations, vendor onboarding and pre-qualification. A vendor should register, vendor registration, vendor submits a complete vendor application formed by the city's procurement website. Required documentation includes vendor application, W nine, tax ID, E I N verification and A C H. Other documents that may be required is the business license, certificate of insurance with required limits and endorsements and relevant professional licenses or certifications. The procurement department does a pre-check review. The purchasing department reviews the submitted documents, verify business licenses and tax ID, confirms valid insurance coverage, check licensures, state board or trade license as applicable, runs a check against federal or state debarred vendor list. We use SAM.gov. Most times when anyone uses a vendor without them going through this, we run the risk of having a vendor that is debarred. And what that means for the city is that if we have any federal funds, we could lose that money if a vendor was used and paid with federal funds. So we must adhere to that particular thing, making sure that each vendor is registered before any work is started. Next slide. Procurement thresholds. Currently our procurement threshold depends on the total estimate cost and nature of procurement. The method will vary. Five hundred dollars or less, no P O is required. Five hundred dollars and one cent to ten thousand dollars and R F Q or request for quotes, three quotes and a P O is required. R F Qs is used for standard goods or services. Ten thousand dollars and one cent and above, formal solicitation required, I T B, I F B or request for proposal. I T B or, or I F B invitation to bid is for well-defined services or goods awarded based on lowest responsible bidder. R F P, request for proposals, is used when a qualitative criteria, for example, experience, methodology are evaluated. Letter of intent may be issued to selected vendors before contract execution to signal award intention or start mobilization, non-Biden unless stated. Next slide. Bid solicitation process. Bid document preparation. Department submits scope of work, specification and funding approval to purchasing. Purchasing drafts and advertise the R F P, R F Q, I T B or I F B with legal advertisement posted on city website and Georgia procurement registry. Submission deadline. Pre-bid meeting if applicable, evaluation criteria and contract terms. Bid evaluation and awards. Quotes evaluated for lowest price and vendor compliance. I T B or I F B, open publicly, award goes to the lowest responsible bidder. The R F P evaluated by committee using scoring rubric, technical and price. Recommendations submitted for city manager or council approval. Next slide. Contract execution. Award notification. Letter of award or notice of intent to award is sent to the selected vendor. Unsuccessful bidders are notified with opportunity for protest per policy. Contract finalization. Final contract drafted, legal review as required. Includes scope of work, insurance requirement, non collusion affidavit, e-verify affidavit, conflict of interest clause, termination for convenience clause, contract is signed by authorized city official and vendor. Next slide. Purchase requisition and purchase orders. Requisition entry. Using the New World system, the department will verify available funds, attach supporting documentation, quotes, contracts or justification, submits requisition for approval. Then there's budget verification. Finance checks the GL accounts for sufficient budget. If insufficient, department must submit a budget transfer request. Then a P O is issued. Upon approval, a purchase order is generated. Work or delivery should not begin before issuance of an authorized P O. This protects the city. Vendor performance and, vendor performance and invoice payment. Goods or service receipts. Department confirms receipt of goods or completion of service. Inspection and approval must occur before payment. Invoice submission. Vendors submit invoice referencing the correct P O number. Split purchases to avoid thresholds are prohibited and may be flagged during audit. Invoice approval and payment. Departments approve invoice for payment. Accounts payable process payments via check or A C H, moving to A C H for all vendors. Note, weekly payments run deadlines apply. To vendor with documents must be submitted by Wednesday at twelve noon to make the current check run. Payment terms usually net thirty unless otherwise negotiated in the contract. Policy compliance and audits. No P O, no pay. All purchases must follow policy thresholds and approvals. Preferred vendors. City typically award based on lowest bid and cannot grant preferred status without competitive process. Emergency purchases require written justification and post-approval documents. Documentation. Audit readiness. All transaction and documentation must be audit compliant. Hence, we must have a P O before any work is started. Split purchases. A split purchase is the intentional breaking up of a large purchase into smaller transactions to stay below a competitive bidding threshold, avoid required approvals or bypass procurement policies. Why it's unethical and prohibited. It violates procurement policy. Splitting purchases undermine established procurement thresholds that are put in place to ensure competitive pricing, transparency and public accountability. It also avoids oversight by circumventing the bidding or approval process. Split purchases bypass the checks and balances designed to protect taxpayer dollars. It also creates an audit red flag. Split purchases are frequently flagged in audits or as fraud, risk or policy violations. They can result in disciplinary actions, repayment demands, or in severe cases, legal consequences. It erodes public trust. It gives the perception of favoritism or misuse of public funds which damages the city's reputation for integrity and fairness. Ethical procurement requires following the full procurement process based on total project cost, not individual invoice amounts. Planning purchases in advance to consolidate needs where possible. Requesting emergency or special waivers only when justifiable and documented. Any questions?
Mayor Porton?
No, I want to thank you for sharing this information because it helps to clarify us. And, and we, we had, we had a conversation about the fact, what our current limits are in terms of the five hundred, the five hundred and one to ten thousand and the ten thousand and one up. So what has been the practice in some of the places that you have been in terms of, you know, having to go for an R F P or R F, yeah, an R F P versus quotes?
So where I came from, it was two hundred and fifty thousand for an R F P. Anything under that required three quotes. But the surrounding area, most, most counties and cities are doing fifty thousand for an R F P. And anything under that is three quotes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Kern.
Thank you for clearing everything up for us. Good information as always. I know purchasing is always challenging. I think you hit the ground running and kind of worked to kind of make sure everything is in compliance over there. So the threshold may be a bit low. I don't know if, what our number should be, but my thought is somewhere in between where we are now and commensurate with the other cities, surrounding cities. But we want to make sure that we have the same safeguards in place and checks and balances as all of our partner cities do. So city manager, I want us to definitely take a look at that and at some point come back and see if there are any adjustments, if, if they need to be made, you know, what y'all's recommendations are. But in addition to your recommendations, how we safeguard if we implement any changes in the policy, so.
Councilmember Arnold.
No questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Gay.
No questions.
All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good one.
We're going to take a fifteen-minute break. We've been going at this for a little while here. So we will pick up at eight twenty P M.